Let's start it.
Yes.
Thank you Chair. Is it working? Alright. Christina Aion Chong. Absent. Van Beerd. James Cavica Gower.
Present.
Mary Godfrey.
Here.
Nicole Hine. Nicole online, no?
No.
Yep, okay. Joseph Omar just arrived. Patty Igawa. And David Yoems.
Here. Madam Secretary, we have a call.
Yes, we do. We've established a call. Sign.
Let's start it with our meeting. To have a moment of silence for the victims and their families of the fire. Just a few seconds of silence, thank you. Let's get started with the Honolulu Fire Department. Again, the Fire Department, Police Department, Pearl City District. Honolulu Police Department, Callie Station, any response?
Right. It turns on a speaker a lot more, like a lot more.
Can you guys hear me? Hello?
Turn it way up.
Okay, you know what? Let me put it by my ear like I'm talking on the phone. It might be better. Can you guys hear me better now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, the video's not gonna work, but at least I turned it on for a little while. This is Lieutenant Kyony Hong from the Kali district. Going over the stats for August, hold on. August 2023. For burglaries, in August, we had one compared to one in July. Motor vehicle thefts, there was two compared to two thefts. There were seven in August compared to six in July. Car break-ins, there were two compared to three in July. The total calls for service were 572 compared to 574 in July. Just a quick follow-up from last month. There was a concern about vehicles parked around the curb and the bus stop area of Ala Ilima and Ala Lilikoi. So when I looked up the stats, there were four vehicles sighted and one was told in the time period from the last meeting. One of them was because the bus called. So that's good. When the public calls, it's a lot easier for the officers to take enforcement action and look for the violations immediately. But if there are new questions this week or this month, I'm free to answer them.
Madam Secretary?
Sorry.
Any questions, board members for Honolulu Police Department to Pearl City District? Question, are you the Pearl City one or the Kali Valley one? Is the district trying to clear everybody to get their business through with them? I guess I brought this up at the last meeting. We got a lot of people sticking in cars at the corner of Ala Ilima. That's where the bus starts, right? And I go on the airbus. And I was complaining that it's gonna hit some car or it's gonna cause a traffic jam. And others said that, you guys asked once that, you know, the bus don't complain that it's our problem. And I thought that the bus needs to answer, they're concerned, not just you guys, but through the city council or the city. Start driving the trash portion. Well, we finally had an incident, a 45-minute away. You guys have to come over, of course, the bus has to come over. And then show that the traffic jam caused because of that. And then finally, folks started giving tickets out. But the tickets are, it's really inconsistent. Cars are still parking there anyway, so what's happening, you know? Because I haven't seen consistency in the tickets.
Sorry, it was, I don't know if you guys can hear me, but it was very broken. I think it was regarding that Ala Lilikoi, Ala Ilima. I don't know if you guys heard, I also typed it in a chat. That four citations were issued and one vehicle was towed.
That's the last question. Can I hear anything you're saying?
Response from the Callie Stations, they go full of citations. To be satisfactory, or do you want those things? My response is not to the, I mean, not to the police, I just wanted to mention it, but it's more for the city people. I mean, the city government people are there, that's what my concern is. Some signs. Ask for a Callie Station, my little sister. Audience, you're ready for Honolulu Police Department, Pearl City, Callie. Thank you, sir. We're going to the Pearl City District, here in Pearl City, if you're on. And then, can we go back to the Pearl Fire Department? Pearl Fire Department, can we get a voice on there?
Oh. Yes, please, yeah.
That's me typing, I didn't read that out.
Okay, we'll come back once we get that back on. Just some announcements and events that we have. Rafford School was in place on September 24th at 4 o'clock in the afternoon. Forget that announcement on last week, I just brought it up because it's coming up this coming week. Mr. Board, do you know that the Rafford School is gonna be the same? Anyway, we're going to go from Rafford School to the Foster Village community and back out. I'm saying, I love it, I'm certain. But just for people interested, the point starts at 4 o'clock, the Rafford School into the Foster Village community. The Army wanted to make an announcement at this time introducing one persons. Can you come up at this time and make your announcement?
The Army.
Aloha, Board. Good evening and community. Aloha. Good evening. This is Lianakam, 311th. And I'm the liaison for your neighborhood board. And I wanted to take a moment to introduce Ms. Selena. Could you share your last name?
Jen Tukowski.
Jen Tukowski. She is brand new to the island, so just let me give her a warm welcome. She just moved here in July to help us with community relations, which we've really needed, so we're excited to have her. She is the Moana Lula Valley rep. And then also the liaison for all of our boards. So she'll be coming around just to get familiar with the topics and the issues of concern at all the different boards. And she's visiting ours tonight, so just wanted to welcome her. And Colonel Pratt is here tonight also, and he's got some flyers to hand out and some announcements later. Is there any questions of us now, or should we plan to also speak during the community portion?
Presentation, but thank you for the introduction. We'll talk to you later.
Thank you, board members. And we also have an update on the contaminated water sign. That we just got it this evening before we left, so we'll share on that. Cool. Thank you.
Are we on community concerns?
No.
Can you? Well, I'm getting them. Concerns or events you want to bring? Strong.
I have two items. Two items. The first one is a neighbor of mine that lives on, I guess, on the Salt Lake Road. From Salt Lake Shopping Center, you go up to there. It's between, not at the top or the bottom, in the middle, there's a bunch of firms that are there. This concern is what's gonna happen when the construction, road construction, the Salt Lake Boulevard riding. You know, when they go on the Maoka side, which means mountain for you folks that don't understand that, on the Maoka side. Right now, they're shutting all the Makai side down, so now there's anything still is shut down, you can't even walk in that area. So when they come up the Maoka side, going up the hill, what's gonna happen to the residents that live there? And that is, can you bring it up with the city concern? And the second concern is, since we cannot work on this tonight, I just wanted to say, I'm gonna, if we can put this on the agenda for the next election. It's a resolution that I wanna do for the amendment to automobile safety checks for street driving engines. Because there's been a lot of complaints from my neighbors all over Salt Lake. The McDonald's senior gang, people living in my case, the Tropicana Manor, people I talk in Salt Lake Shopping Center. And they all tell me that at night, the cars going down the hill making tremendous noise. And it drives people nuts. And we talked to the police about this, but by the time the police gets there, they're long gone. And the police says, we can't do nothing about this, and it's not our problem if they're not here. So I have a resolution for a solution. I'm gonna pass it out to the board, they can pick it over and talk about that at a later speaking.
Time to put out the agenda, but there's a number of issues to take care of for the next meeting. So much paperwork.
Board members, for the issues and concerns or events, Mr. Board. Thank you, thank you Chair. Board members, I'm here, just a quick announcement. Tomorrow from 9 to 12 at 3401 L.A. Is a open market in support of the Shantou, which is a tougher public health-based program. At the doors for single motor vehicle insurance. So that you can finally go to like groceries or just artisans, and it also goes to helping Maui for the new efforts in the future. So I wanna come out, support, so it's public.
The address again?
3401 L.A.
Audience, any concerns or events you want to bring up for this team? Okay, going back to the Fire Department.
You want me to read them out? Since the city has a manual event shift to resolve, I will read them out. Last year, there were zero structure fires, zero wildland crash fires, zero nuisance fires, zero cooking fires. In fact, there were alarms, seven medical emergencies. Pedestrian, sorry. If a vehicle crashes. And that's it for the stats. Their safety tip of the month is evacuation planning. In the event of emergency, be prepared with an evacuation plan. Create your own plan with all the members of your family slash household. Keep in mind those limited abilities, children, elderly, and pets. Same.
Okay, let's move on to city government officials, Mayor Rick Blandy's office.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Sorry, it's been really hard to hear the questions and what's been being said, but I guess we'll try our best. Here, hold on, let me share my screen real quick. Okay, can everybody see the mayor's highlights newsletter? Oh, you guys don't have a TV anymore?
Are you still up? Yes.
Okay, so I clearly hear you guys. Yeah, so we, um. So yeah, we'd like to encourage everybody to take a look at this newsletter if they get a chance. It's at oneahu.org. And so the mayor would like to note some of the efforts the city county of Honolulu has made in helping out Maui during their Mauna fires and this tragedy. So 40 members of the Honolulu Fire Department went to Maui to help fight fires and assist their department in any way we could, including our Honolulu Fire Chief Howe. The police department sent detectives, telecom specialists, and counselors to support the department. And the director of Honolulu's Department of Emergency Management, Hiro Toya. He sent his deputy director, Jennifer Walter, and a number of other staff to help the Maui's Emergency Management Department. We'd like to also point out in the newsletter that we were able, the city was able to install a new lifeguard stand at Kahai Point. And it's the, it's the first in 11 years, which expands the total to 42 towers across the island. We also like to note that within two hours of installing this tower and having it staffed, the lifeguards were actually able to perform a rescue right away. So if people that don't know, the Kahai Power Plant has a discharge that creates a current. And it's, and people can get trapped in this current, which is why we put a lifeguard tower out there. So the mayor would also like to note that himself and administration are following through on a decades-old promise to redevelop Verona Village, which is out in Eva. It's an old plantation, housing community that had unfortunately fallen, fell into some disrepair. So the city will be turning over the land to their Savio and Habitat for Humanity, and they'll be working on redeveloping the historic village. We'd also like to note that Forbes magazine has once again named the city and county of Honolulu as one of the best places to work in Hawaii. So we strongly encourage people to check out governmentjobs.com or visit the city county of Honolulu website, their HR, and you can look for jobs within the city. Our Department of Design and Construction is definitely looking for bright, talented people. We're definitely looking for engineers and other, we're looking for clerical staff, looking for all kinds of people. But there are many, many positions open within the city, and we'd love to have people from the community come apply. So following up with some of the concerns from from the last meeting. Chair Yoems, we received your letter regarding flooding around the 645 Oahu Street. Currently, I believe the Board of Water Supply, Department of Facilities Maintenance, and the Department of Planning and Permitting are reviewing that letter and will be providing a response. There was a question about painting the curbs red. I believe it ties into some of the communities' concerns about parking in the Ala Ilima and Ala Lilikoi intersection, especially across from Tropicana Manor. So unfortunately, from getting from two departments, it says that our Department of Transportation Services and our Department of Facilities Maintenance no longer generally paints curbs red to identify no parking areas. DTS, it sounds like DTS will paint curbs red only at official bus stops and passenger loading zones. But yeah, it sounds like if there's confusion on the, and we can discuss this further because it sounds like there's some more questions about it from the community. Can you barely hear me? Sorry, I'm seeing somebody standing in front of the camera. Sorry, are you guys unable to hear me?
You can speak louder.
If you can turn his volume.
Understood.
He said muncher, I meant muncher. If he saw that muncher.
But yeah, it sounds like the Ala Lilikoi and that area of concern of the street sweeping. So the street sweeping is on Thursdays between 9:11 and on Ala Ilima, on the Makai side, the street sweeping is on Thursdays as well. On Ala Ilima, on the Maoka side, it sounds like the street sweeping is on Fridays. And then which may be causing some of the confusion because it's two different days. But generally, it sounds like DTS was saying that they would not be revising their signage. But we can discuss more because it sounds like the community may be seeing things that or things that are going on in the community that we may not be aware of. Would you guys like to discuss further?
Questions from Mr. General, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
You're gonna give me feedback, you know, we'll sit back.
I, I'm the one that brought up the issue about that bus, the one L turning from Ala Lilikoi onto Ala Ilima. But right now. And I talked to a lot of the residents there, and I even talked to a bunch of the people that got hurt over there. It's kind of ridiculous, the people I've told me, they don't see the no parking sign there, although it's right in front of our faces. And I still like to see that parking there red, so people know that they gotta be alert. And if I should set up a tollway sign right here that if the car is parked there, we're gonna take you away. And that's how we get people's attention, because right now, people are not taking that seriously. They don't pay if they get tickets or not, they're just still parking there. And we had one incident that I personally saw where the bus, the one L, which long a parking bus couldn't make the turn. We had to call the police over, stop, block that whole right turn thing for like 45 minutes. And because some car was parked right at the edge of that no parking thing. Blocked the bus, and it was like just about an inch from quitting and scrapping. And there's some miraculous, I guess, there's one really good bus driver, something that came over. And they took the bus back and forth, and finally, it was able to squeeze by. Okay, that's just one incident. But the thing is, it's just waiting for an accident to happen. So for, I'm sorry, but I cannot do what you're saying that well because the sound has been such that you can't hear what you're saying. So basically, the point that I'm trying to get across is if we're gonna get tickets, it's pretty, it's pretty consistent on it. Because they're not consistent right now, number one. Number two, and even those that are there, and people that are still parking there. So they're not being serious about it as well. And maybe the residents, they're feeling that, you know what? Something needs to get done, that'll wake them up, I say, it's serious. It's not a joke, some or some of us. In other words, something where the cars are not gonna park. They don't think they're gonna park, even though the parking sign is there, even the tickets are good. They should make a toll zone there, so people aren't parked, if that's it, thank you.
Mr. Gallagher, from my understanding, what I heard from Mr. Mayor, I guess that the city looks into a toll zone area. According from the bus stop to side street, see if that's feasible. And so, I guess, we should be sure to call 911, report it, and just go to the emergency, and call 911, report to the police. There's a place something to do, and say stuff to do, but they have a complaint. I'm sure the police are going to complain. James Gallagher, can you go back, please?
Just so you know, some people are online saying that that mic alone seems to be the best one for them to hear us. They can't hear us very well, because they said that that might not work very well. I mean, if you guys don't like going up there with speed.
Since I need to shut the door, this type of online stuff, and this chair. I'm gonna make the next meeting personal, this online stuff is gonna be fun. I cannot stand this online stuff. If you wanna attend a meeting, you come in person, if you don't wanna come, don't come. But next meeting is not gonna be, whatever this online. If the rest of the board don't agree with me, then get me out of this chair, thank you. Let's move on. So see, finish with your presentation, because I must say, I can't, I couldn't hear anything that you're saying. And I don't know the whole world, so I mean, it's the system itself, so.
I don't do that. I'm speaking well. Yeah, they, uh.
I want you to change the audio on that side. It's because, are you, is your volume off? Jackson?
What?
I mean, it's not volume, but on, as far as the audio part of it. Because that's where I think a beep app is coming from. And so I can't change my mic. Because the beep app comes from the, 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 this volume out, so I disengaged my chat. I disengaged my audio on my, on the booth, okay? So I.
What do you want me to do? Okay, I'm not a radio guy. What do you want me to do? Unplug something, plug it back in, turn it off?
Okay, we're done here. City report, send it to me, and I'll go to the rest of the board members, but I couldn't hear any of that. Let's move on to council member.
Good evening. Are you able to hear me? Yes, okay. Hi, this is Tricia Riopel from council member, Radiant Cordero's office. I did put the link to her newsletter in the chat box. And I'll see if I'm able to share screen, so please bear with me. Let's see. Are you, are you able to see my screen? Yes. Okay. So I just wanted to highlight a few things on behalf of council member. She is looking for a representative from council district seven for the Board of Water Supply Stakeholder Advisory Group. So if anybody is interested in being considered, then please email your resume to councilmember@rcordero@honolulu.gov by September 29. And then moving on to the next page, we just wanted to highlight that our office did submit a request to the city's Department of Facility Maintenance to repaint, repair, or replace the faded and missing traffic markings and signs at the following locations listed. And then, in addition to the, her newsletter, she also wanted me to share that the city is extending the feral chicken removal service to private property owners. And basically, what this means is that the city has contracted with Sandwich Isle Pest Solutions to offer the services to private property owners at a reduced cost. And these are for managing the feral chickens. There's a cage and disposal service that's open to property owners of all types and requires them to work directly with the city's pest control vendor. And the number that you can call if interested is 808-456-7716. Or you can also make an online request for this service at www.sandwichisle.com. And that concludes my report for tonight. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take them back. Thank you.
Questions for council, council member Cordero's office? Audience, any questions, concerns for council member Cordero's office? Audience, any questions, concerns for council member Cordero's office? Very much, thank you. To the next speaker, Josh Green's office.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Someone that showed up.
Thank you, Cherry Young, Spice Young Gun, Department of Transportation, Governor Green's representative. Um, so, this month's queue of Ke'ala Ho, um, basically really committed on point, um, all of the efforts and all of the coordination from the governor and his office and his executive branch, um, come together in response to Lahaina fires. Specifically for the Department of Transportation, we were on the ground from the initial responding to the fires by really working to the airlines to increase, um, their seat capacity to get the visitors out of the area. Um, we, we also, um. This is where Karaoke Bar, so.
Yeah. He went case.
Sorry, it could have been user error. Did I turn off? Okay, sorry, anyway, so the harbors, we also accommodated small plane, um, helicopters, uh, for access for residents and service providers.
Do you wanna go back, give him this purple and use it great? Cause I see your gray is purple. Just adjusting it so that people can hear. So, can I, did you touch, uh?
Thank you. Okay, so for the highways. We supported Maui. I don't think I need a mic, cause I'm. So, for the highways, what we did was we supported Maui, um, police department by helping to close, um, P'ilani Highway for debris removal. We also are in process of installing, we've already installed the majority of it. But installing the screens to confine the hazardous materials in the impact site and to protect the highway users. For harbors, we waived the certain cargo fees to hopefully accommodate donations and aid. And this is timely for Member Omara, so last session, legislative session, Act sixty-three pass. So Act sixty-three pass, which, um, was noise detection for traffic cameras pilot program. The legislature allowed us to use two-point-five billion of our own state highway funds to hire consultants to do a study and then a report to the legislature. But of course, this is on the state side, so it's gonna be on our state highway right. But hopefully it meant to, you know, this issues with issue, or we could start a conversation with the city. I got an update for Board Member Beard's, um, traffic signal on P'ulua from Tripler Hop, Tripler Hospital to shorten the length of time of that particular traffic. Um, our traffic branch let me know that he is working with the city and hopefully I can report before our next meeting. But basically, what I wanna say is, it's like, working with the governor and all of the executive departments, really a coordination effort and everybody coming together to help our community. What are your primary questions?
Bird, question. Mr. Beard. Um, you said that you think there's two-point-five million dollars to do traffic study for the light, for that?
Maybe it's small, noise detection, traffic camera pilot.
For a lot?
The law says any urban population of five, two thousand or more, so be under the segment. So Waukun, that's Maui. Urban population, maybe not even.
But that's two-point-five million for.
For two-point-five million, you could put twenty cameras up. Why do we need a study? I don't understand that. You know, go to an intersection, put the lights up. Why do you need a study? Boy, you guys blow money left and right. I don't get it.
Okay, anybody else, uh, questions for the governor? Audience, send us a photo of the governor.
David, I have one more. He had to go around, right? The P'ulua light, the traffic light, did they tell you why they changed it? What was the reasoning behind changing it in the first place? Get back, get back to me. I'm sorry. Oh, no, no, that's okay. I mean, they just can't change it because they, hey, let's go change it. They have to have a reason. I'd like to know what the reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Moving on to Senator Glenn Wakai's office.
Anybody concerned with Wakai's office, online?
Yes, can you hear me?
Moving on, how's my day?
I'm here for Senator Glenn Wakai.
Okay, where you go?
Sorry about that. Okay, um, today we just, did you guys, do you guys see my, um, newsletter?
Nope.
Well, we see you.
Okay, good. Hold on one second. Okay, do you still see me?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, Senator Wakai couldn't be here today. He's traveling, um, to Japan. Just to go over some few things about the newsletter. I hope you can see the newsletter and you can see me. Um, my name's Harris and I work for Senator. I'm gonna be going over a few things with the, um, newsletter. So the first thing that was exciting this week was the Salt Lake, um, Ohana picnic. It was held on September tenth, um, Sen- Senator Wakai partnered with Sandra and they had a picnic for the Salt Lake residents. It was a very good turnout, lots of food and lots of beverages. Most of all, it was a great opportunity for everyone to get together and get acquainted and have some relaxing time and fun. So it was a great, um, get-together, nice food, nice, nice people and thank you for, thank you for that, Sandra. Okay, next thing that they have on the newsletter that I wanted to go over was the Moanalua High Celebrity Week. Um, Homecoming Week was at Moanalua, um, and it began with a cheer competition. Senator Wakai was there and he was cheering as always everyone along. Everyone had lots of fun and enjoyed the time together. On September sixth, there was a homecoming pep rally. On September eighth, a homecoming parade along with other bands. They proudly marched along Salt Lake area. They started at the fire station on Allah Napunani, I believe, then they went down to Likini Street. Um, the highlight was on September ninth, at the Moanalua High School Band, they performed the Space Frontier, the Final Frontier during a homecoming halftime. I, the last topic I wanted to just bri- briefly talk about, which is not on the newsletter. It's about Radford High School. Um, I attended what they call a MIAC meeting. I've been going to this on a monthly basis. It's a really good, um, um, it's a really good meeting. MIAC stands for Military Youth Advisory Council and they meet every month. Um, this was also established in nineteen eighty-five and it composed of representatives from the military, community leaders, parents and students. At this meeting, the principal, Principal Sunday updated us on the Maui fires and what we can do, where we can donate and what we can do to help. They're also planning to have a Maui relief concert to help them also. Also, I thought, also, I thought this is very neat. Um, principal explained also how all the students when, when they enroll, they will meet with a counselor first for the, for better transition and will also be provided with a lunch buddy. And a lunch buddy is to help with meeting other students too. Um, in addition to everyone's hard work on this day, the culinary department supplied us with lunch, which is really good. And, um, that's about it. We, that's about it that we have for Senator Wakai and, um, he's in Japan, as I said. Sorry, he couldn't be here. Um, if there's any impressions or concerns, I can bring it back to the Senator and thank you. That's all I have.
Questions for Senator Wakai? Audience, any questions for Senator Wakai? Uh, let the senator know that he forgot to invite the neighborhood board to his picnic. Anyway, thank you for coming on. Moving on. House Representative Linda Ichiyama. Just for the record, Board Member Nicole Hyde came on online at, uh, six fifty-six PM, for the record. Representative Ichiyama? Okay, doesn't seem like anybody's online. Representative Mike Ayu's office. Anybody?
Can everyone hear me? Hello, can you guys hear me?
Will you do, Grab?
Okay, uh, I just, uh, gonna follow up on what, uh, Senator Wakai's, uh, staff just talked about, um, the House of Representatives recently, um, established some working groups to address the Lahaina fires. Um, so there's one on environmental remediation, food and water, uh, jobs and businesses, schools and shelter and wildfire prevention. I'm gonna be serving on the Shelter Committee. It kind of goes along with, um, my work on the Housing Committee for the House of Representatives. Um, if anyone, if anyone was a participant in the Build Beyond Barriers Working Group that the governor set up with his emergency proclamation, um, there was a pretty strong, resounding call that, um, the Maui people really should be consulted. So, as we start our, our work in the Working Group for Housing, um, one of the main focuses is gonna be how we can interface with the Maui people and figure out exactly what their needs are and what they want. So, a- as we start that investigation, that's what we're gonna do. Um, but if anyone from the community has any ideas, your suggestions for me, please let me know. Um, we're gonna start in the next coming weeks and figure out how we can, uh, provide more shelter or more housing solutions for the Maui people. And this is gonna be separate from the governor's actions, so, um, we're gonna be doing a, a more deep investigation and, and try to figure out solutions for them. But that pretty much concludes my part. If any, if anyone has any questions.
Board members, any questions for Representative Ayu? Audience, any questions for the representative? Moving on, thank you for coming on.
Thank you, Chair.
Moving on to federal government officials. On the agenda, I put on here is President Joe Biden, and I did that. I just wanted to thank the president for coming out to Lahaina and see firsthand the suffering and devastation that was caused, uh, that occurred in Lahaina. Whether you're Republican, Democrat, or otherwise, it doesn't matter. At least he came, he saw, and hopefully the members will come in to take care of the people of Lahaina. And that's all I have for that particular, um, segment. Going on to you, Senator Brian Schatz's office. Nobody listed. Going on to you, Congressman Ed Case's office. Nobody, let's move on. We have a presentation, a DTS proposal for speed tables at Allah Napunani Street and Allah Alani Street. This is presented by Kelly Akasaki. Is she present?
I'm here. Can you guys hear me? Good morning. I'm gonna share my presentation and you all let me know as long as you guys can see it. Can you all see my presentation?
You will, Kelly, perfect.
Okay, thank you. My name is Kelly Akasaki. I'm with the Department of Transportation Services. I am with the Transportation Engineering Division. And today I wanna share with you our proposals for Allah Napunani and Allah Alani Street Traffic Calming. We're gonna talk about Unani in this stretch, so this is just a map, overview map, and I'll go into detail on each location. And also Allah Alani, Monalua Valley. So I did meet with the Moanalua Valley, uh, Community Association back in August, August ninth. And I presented both of these to them because Allah Alani falls under their community association. And they've also asked to come to the Salt Lake, uh, Foster Village Neighborhood Board to present Allah Napunani. I told them I would come on to the next board. I missed it in the August meeting. I did not have enough time to get on the agenda. But I am on today, so thank you for giving me, uh, your time. Uh, just to go over some of the facts, this is the speed data that DTS collected for both streets. As you can see, there's a lot of speeding, um, Allah Alani specifically back in nineteen, uh, the eighty-fifth percentile speed was fifty-three miles per hour, which is really high for any residential street, which is why we are looking at both streets to do other traffic calming measures. So what have we done in the past? Allah Napunani, we already put in the roundabout. This is the one you all know at Likini and Alani Street. That was put in about two thousand and eight. In about two thousand and eighteen, we road dieted Allah Napunani and there still seems to be speeding. So what we are proposing, one more picture of what we did for, uh, Allah Alani back in two thousand eight at the same, around the same time the roundabout went in, we put in two speed tables, concrete speed tables at the end of Allah Alani as you approach the park. And the reasoning for this at that time was because the bus route ended prior to these two humps. Um, so that's what we did in the past and what I wanna propose now, and, um, thanks to Ed Nifans and the Department of Transportation, they have offered to pu- to put in these asphalt speed for us, or speed tables. So what I'm showing you now is North Road and Ke'ala Nui Drive, which the state just put in beginning of August. So what they're doing is they're allowing us to jump on their construction contract. If we do the design and we call out the streets, uh, Ed and his crew have been able to put it in on city streets. Uh, if the city were to do it, it would take their five or six years for us to input it. So we have been partnering with them, are grateful for their assistance and what we're proposing for the next streets. Okay, let me go over some of the things if you don't know. Speed bump, little things you mostly find in parking lots. Um, speed humps or speed tables is what we use on regular city streets. Speed tables, which is the lower one, is usually what we like to install when there's buses. So you come up to a ramp, it levels off and you go back down. So we are asking state to put in speed tables for us, which is the bottom picture. Some of the things we look for when we put in some of these speed tables is we have adequate distance from curves. We don't want it on a curve where you're coming around a blind curve and you jump right into a hump. There's minimum distances from intersections, at least five feet away from any driveway. We wanna make sure the lighting is good. And if we do have pedestrian crossings, we would like to consider speed tables or raised crosswalks, which is, uh, majority of what state puts. So I'm gonna talk about Allah Napunani first. So the five red circles are the locations that we are proposing for speed tables. And I'm gonna go into detail a little more about the area in blue. When I presented to the Monalua Valley, uh, Community Association, they asked why we couldn't have one more in the blue section, which is kind of where they pick up speed right before they head back onto the freeway by Kaiser Hospital. And I'll go into detail why, design-wise, we cannot put one. Go to the next slide. So these are the first three in the lower half. So the first. So the first one that you see um, in the middle of the screen is right next to the Monalua High School driveway. And that one, um, I'm gonna go into detail of that one, why I really wanted to put a raised crosswalk at the existing crosswalk there. But we have an issue with the two driveways that are right there, which are really close together, which won't allow me to drop a speed there. Um, we have a few more, so I put one right on approach to the driveway on each side. So one coming from uh, the Ma'aka Bound and one coming from the Ma'kae Bound. And then we're proposing another one at Pu'a'ala Place. So again, this is the one next to the High School on approach to the crosswalk there. As you can see, the crosswalk that's existing there is really close to two existing driveways. So this is a picture of that crosswalk and the curb ramp that's there and how close it is to the driveways. If I were to do a raised uh, crosswalk, I would have to come up six feet, go across the ten feet for the crosswalk, and then back down six feet. So it would be right in the middle of these two driveways, which is why I'm going back to this one where I proposed it on each side of the crosswalk. And the other ones here is like I mentioned, that Pu'a'ala Place. Then we have two more further up by Pu'u Malu intersection, and then one more by the um, al- almost when we get to the approach of the always stop close to the, the hospitals. This is the Pu'u Malu one. Again, this one, because it, the existing crosswalks are too close, too close to the intersection, I would have dropped the humps, the downside of the hump would be in the middle of the intersection, which is why we're going on approach to the crosswalks. And this is Ha Ha Nui, which is almost uh, closer to the always stop. So let me go back to the blue section on why we couldn't fit one in the blue section here. There's too many driveways, so there's not an appropriate place for me to have enough room in between each of the driveways to put one perpendicular to the roadway. So we did look at this one with uh, went out several times to try and see if we could squeeze it in in several places. But that blue location just couldn't fit. And we did Ala Ala Lani. So this is what we presented to the um, Monalua Valley Neighborhood Board. The blue section is where we already have the existing concrete speed tables. The two red sections are where we're proposing two asphalt speed tables to be installed by the State Department of Transportation. So this is an overview of the areas, and I'm gonna zoom in to each one. So the two addresses are closer to thirteen thirteen and fourteen eighty-five. And again, these locations were picked because these are more the straightaway areas, and we wanted to avoid the curved areas. Other than that, uh, are there any questions or comments for me?
You have any questions? Mr. Mayor, this is a proposal, um, finally looking to, before we get something built.
Okay, so this is my proposal. And like I said, uh, city is partnering with a wonderful assistant from state DOT. Once you guys are okay with it, I get your uh, I guess, support. These plans are going to state DOT, and within the next month or so, they can install it. So they have a existing uh, open contract where they can put these in really quick. So I'm trying to work with them as a much locations as I can islandwide. And I'm really focusing on schools, so um, Monalua High School, um, the other two that I showed you, North Road is right in front of Ilima and Campbell High School and Eva. The one on Halakahi, I'm sorry, Keal Nui Drive is right in front of Holomoa Elementary School. We have a list of about another ten or so that we wanna try and get in before the end of next year. So they have been wonderful with trying to get them in as quickly as possible. I, I'm, I'm thinking in the next two months, they will be installed.
Oh, thank you, Chair. Um, I've
She's, she's now playing.
Hello, hello. Okay, yeah, I've seen, um, I've seen you just spoke with it. I spoke with two uh, neighbors yesterday. They're not here, they're in the town, but they're in trees, crosswalks, and the Ala Pu'u Malu.
Ala Pu'u Malu, mhm. So the Ala Pu'u Malu location, is that what you're saying?
Uh, yes, that's near the rear entrance of Monalua High School, and if they're here, it's thank you.
Any other board members with questions? Audience, any questions concerning this? Um, I don't know, the presentation sent to the, so we sent to the board. Just to see the next meeting, we're pretty much, but we're trying to address some of the second one. Next meeting, because from the way I see the presentation, I think sometime to for investigations, then come up with that. I'm just curious how two key street locations, one valid, two locations, um, still located, maybe responsible city, do you know anything about that?
So I'm sorry, you, so you're asking on how we pick the locations?
What do you mean? Before the two key street locations, with this board, the Ala Ala Lani street location, and my, basically, I didn't say so well.
So there's three other areas?
The three other areas, I'm sorry, it's a little
The three areas that was provided by this board to the city, one valid, the street, one apartment, two on the street, one apartment, and one filled up on the board. What I was in the fourth part of the block of the street. Everything was submitted to the city, still being done, and I'm here about Ala Ala Lani Street.
Okay, so you're asking about the other three streets, Likini Street and Ala Ilima Street that came in from the neighborhood board?
Yes, I'm asking what happened.
Okay, so, so we are still waiting for accounts for those. So, so our speed data has not come back yet. So, if they do come back and show that there is still speeding along those streets, then we will, one, either uh, put it in for funding, or two, we would ask state to see if they can add them to their list and help us and install it with their contract that they have now. We're just not done with our study. So we do owe you for Likini and Ala Ilima, and I believe one on Ala Lilikoi. Those are still pending with our department.
Okay, as far as I'm concerned, it's consumed, I went from, went from thirty-five miles to twenty-five miles. We added a roundabout, we added uh, two in this direction to land, and we have also added a bike lane. So one changes in Ala Ala Lani Street. I'm sure the residents, the little man in Ala Ala Lani is in favor of these um, speed tables, and people are striving to connect to others, and so happy with that. Please send your information to me or get to my board, and then we'll do my decision in the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we're talking about gambling. Ala Stadium, anybody representing Ala Stadium?
Hello, Chris Kenny Makar from the Department of Accounting and General Services. Hello?
Okay.
Hi, can, okay, thank you. Um, I'm Chris Kenny Makar from the Department of Accounting and General Services, mahalo, chair Yom's, and members of the board and members of the community. Tonight, we have just two items we wanted to give you an update on. The first is that we did complete our market sounding process, and the public report is available on our website now. The question on why the market sounding is important is, if you recall, back in May, we started on a new approach for the new Alloa City Entertainment District, where the stadium and the surrounding district is going to be awarded under one contract. Because this approach is unique, and we wanna make sure that it's competitive and that it's attractive to offers, while still getting all our state objectives and the vision completed, we did go out on this special outreach to the industry. So if you recall, we started in June with a webinar. We worked through offer, offering opportunities for written feedback from the industry, and we conducted interviews with them as well. We happily concluded our evaluation, and the good news is that there is still a strong, genuine market interest in this project. The number one concern that they raised is similar to ours, and that's making sure the project is still financially feasible. So we are going through an update right now of all of our market analysis and our financial analysis to make sure that we're still in the right target to be able to complete these goals. And they did raise some other good collaborative and constructive criticisms and support. We're working through that right now so that we can continue our procurement. And we're looking to start that procurement before the end of this year. With that start, then we're looking at still seeing construction completed by the two thousand twenty-eight football season. The other update we wanted to share, and I'll share my screen, is just um, to go ahead and give you a glimpse of our latest newsletter, which just came out last week, and um, similar to everyone, our own team as well is supporting our family and community on Maui. In the newsletter, we go ahead and give links to support additional um, donations to their, to provide relief for them. We give you a quick project update, and that's basically what I just talked about, the market sounding. We go through news, that's important, and we're tracking this for you. But the Halava TOD zone changes, they did get passed by the City and Colony Planning Commission. We are all waiting to see when that's going to come out on the city council. As soon as we know, we'll let you know so that the community can continue to be actively involved. We update our frequently asked questions to answer some of the questions about why the zoning is important. We give you a little bit of a highlight on what's going on at Aloha Stadium with our highlighted swap meet vendor. And then we do a quick recap on what we provided this summer for activities. For those of you intended, we had the fiftieth state fair, skyline with, you know, the start of the rail system, the big birthday bash, and our mega bond that I believe was just uh, last week or uh, two weeks ago, I'm sorry. We do highlight upcoming events like Rebel Soja Concert on the twenty-third. We go through this month in history over time. We go through our UH Spotlight as, you know, key member of our stadium community. And then we also shared that last month, we went out to Loko Iwaka'ao for the Community Day. We all came back with much more than we brought, and we look forward to participating much more with the community in the coming uh, months and years. On their behalf, we share the next event for them is a Kapahui O Manoa, where people can go in it, watch people demonstrating kapahu making. And last but not least, we wanted to give you a heads up that we are going to be sending out a survey in the next week or so to all of you to basically ask for your feedback on what you like, don't like, or what you wanna see in our newsletters. And that's all I have for this month, and I'm open to any questions.
Any questions for the stadium? If you have an audience here, any questions for the stadium, would you come up to the microphone and say?
So, um, just, I'm Chris Saliasu, I'm with the Aloha Stadium, I'm the deputy stadium manager, and just wanna be here, present, and uh, be able to answer any questions. Chris covered everything, but we're always available to answer any questions that you guys have. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you. Let's move on to border water supply. This is the from Azad, I don't have to say. Okay, border water supply.
Hi, everyone. I hope you can hear me. My name is Jimmy, and I'll be representing border water supply tonight. I have no main breaks to report in the last month, so I just have my general water announcements for Source Protection Week. The border water supply will observe Source Protection Week from September twenty-fourth through September thirtieth. The goal is to bring awareness about the importance of protecting our precious drinking water sources. While Oahu's water purely comes from groundwater resources, here are some basic ways you can hashtag protect the source. So there's three, three things. One, the first one is conserve and use water efficiently. You can do that by checking and repairing leaks regularly, and using only what you need, and don't waste it. The second is properly disposing of household waste. Don't pour it on the ground. And the last one is protecting watersheds. Stay on designated trails and respect the wildlife while you are hiking. And you can also join a community watershed partnership group. With, with the closure of three water sources near Red Hill, we all need to be responsible stewards to ensure we'll have an adequate supply of safe drinking water today and for future generations. Go to www dot borderwatersupply dot com slash source for more information. Let's all do our part and make every drop count. Uh, with that, that's the end of my report, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Any questions about border water supply and streaming? I like, it's impossible to do a water challenge, you know, every, uh, I mean, every month. A water challenge, because of the, um, continuing our work, and then, you know, and the incidents that have happened over the last five years or so. It's what was there for New folks, and it's for the water challenge in our area. Right at that point, that is not, but, you know, at this point, once every other month, that's a failure. Like also another thing is, like I said, we got closed. You know, I want to say because a lot of people here that are, that are watching, and so we're gonna have a team that will be watching this as well. And also, some of us forget, kind of thing, like I thought there were only two of us, so and I'm just thinking, you know, I'd kind of like to know why the third, or what's the third, and how long are those expected to close, that kind of thing. That's it. Thank you. Any questions here? Any questions for the border water supply?
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
To skyline, the bus, anybody from there? Did we see uh, a email from Melissa Gonzalez, who's with uh, Tandem Transit, she couldn't make the news, she was um, just, she wanted to know about the border, but I sent this to the board as well. Um, thank you, but enjoy your records, she's in good, maybe, or hammerheadin' paradise. Well, I hardly have received any information for hammerheadin' periods, the possibility of future responsibility for periods. Um, I feel like what you mean, and uh, what I should say, that's one point that she couldn't have been said. To the board, um, we start off with a meeting.
Good evening, Chair. Yom's and uh, board members, Chuck Anthony with Joint Base Pearl Harbor Hickam. I don't know if there's a representative from the Environmental Protection Agency online or not. I don't wanna steal their uh, Kulianna was uh, talking about the you know, the community representative, uh, initially or not. I just wanna make sure.
Make sure, anybody from Uh, yes, hello?
Still got a phone, sir?
Hello, yes, this is Alejandro Diaz with the U S Environmental Protection Agency.
Okay, we'll get to you right after the board finishes up. I just wanted to make sure that we're prepared on taking it.
Okay, sounds good.
I know that at least a few members of the board uh, were nominees, and so I, again, I just thought it was important that we bring uh, Saturdays meetings, but I'll, I'll leave that to the EPA to, to complete the details. Um, so, joint
Task force.
Joint Task Force Red Hill completed the repacking of three hundred and eighty thousand gallons of fuel into the pipelines that connect Red Hill to uh, Joint Base Pearl Harbor Hickam. Basically, that, that sets the conditions now for the defueling to begin, which is now scheduled to begin on October sixteenth. Also, I wanted to mention that Joint Task Force Red Hill has a defueling open house coming up. That's uh, October third, four P M. That's at Keahie Lagoon Memorial Park at the Wayne Bird Memorial Hall. And make sure that the public was aware of that. Basically, they'll have subject matter Basically, they'll have subject matter experts available for anybody who's got questions related to the defueling and other issues related to, to Red Hill. Uh, again, that's coming up on October 3rd. Uh, earlier this week, the Office of the Secretary of Defense and Joint Task Force Red Hill also issued information about the Department of Defense notification to Congress. Military operations in the Indo-Pacific region will not be adversely impacted by the closure of Red Hill. That was basically a requirement that the Department of Defense had to issue congressional notification for. Also, uh, the latest water quality reports are available online, safewaters.org. And for anybody who wants to go to a long-term monitoring program information booth, which we put out to the public periodically. And next one is going to be at the Next Mall Rotunda on September 28th. So again, you'll have subject matter experts on the long-term monitoring program. You can ask questions about, you know, what is, what does this data mean? How do I determine what's, you know, testing that's been done in my particular area? So it has some subject matter experts there on September 28th and the Rotunda, the Navy Exchange and again.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Chair. It's your truck, say October 3rd at 4:00 PM at Kehe Lagoon, is that correct?
That's correct. That's the, uh, Joint Task Force.
Joint Task Force. And my understanding is the repacking of the fuel lines is completed? And is it true there's three fuel lines that have been repacked?
Uh, two.
Two, okay. And, um,
Two different, two different types of fuel.
Two different types of fuel, okay. And my understanding is there's three fuel lines that need to be, that are being used to defuel?
That's correct.
And also, no, uh, September 28th at the NEX Rotunda, at what time?
Uh, that'll be pretty much all day, as long as, well, at least until the early hour, morning.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Audience, any questions for the Navy? Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Alejandro, EPA, thank you. Do you have the floor?
All right. Thanks, everyone, for their patience, um, with my technology here. But just wanted to make an announcement that on Saturday, September 16th, from 1:30 to 5:30, participants can vote on membership for the Community Representation Initiative. You can participate in person at the Salt Lake Elementary School Cafeteria, which I believe is next door to where you're meeting at today. Uh, or virtually, there's going to be also a Zoom link and hopefully it'll also work out that we could provide a link on the broadcast that will be on Olo, uh, the community, uh, broadcast channel. But the Community, uh, Representation Initiative is, uh, the membership will include, uh, 10 different representatives who will meet with the government agencies approximately once a month, uh, through the closure of the Red Hill facility. The group will review Red Hill information and provide input related to closure, defueling and assuring safe drinking water. Uh, this requirement was added in the 2023, uh, consent order, uh, in response to public comments. And, you know, just to give you some background on this, between August 23rd and September 6th, uh, the individuals that were being, uh, interested in being representatives of the CRI were asked to submit self-nominations and confirm that they were, uh, serve as liaisons, uh, to represent, uh, just different, uh, community groups. For example, impacted residents, Oahu residents, community-based organizations, activists, uh, individuals representing Native Hawaiian interests, um, and so on. But the nominees, um, selected one type of seat to represent and the selection process is really, you know, put in place to try to give, uh, to ensure like fair and transparent selection of the CRI members. And was developed based on input from a broad range of community, um, interest and input. So in advance, um, on the website, epa.gov, red-hill, um, are all the details to everything I just said, um, including links and information about, um, the Community or Representation Initiative. So, um, the website also is going to be live, uh, is live with some nomination bios for some of the folks that are going to be, you know, up for nomination for, uh, selection into this Community Representation Initiative Group. That's all I have for that. Um, I think, uh, you know, in terms of Red Hill, uh, defueling, I think, uh, the Navy pretty much said everything, uh, pretty well on that topic in terms of still on track to, um, have a mid-off, uh, mid-October, uh, defuels start date. Um, I think the EPA agrees with that timeline. Also, you know, tracking very closely, a potential government shutdown on October 1st. However, um, we are working on getting, uh, the folks that are very necessary to do that defuel work and not delay any of that defuel work to be on the exempt list, which being that they would work through any government shutdown as, um, very important, uh, staff that are needed for immediate work. So, um, still working on that, um, not a hundred percent, um, on that yet, but, uh, that is our idea is to, is to have folks on that, uh, exempt list to be able to work despite, uh, any type of government shutdown. Um, and with that, I'll open the floor for any questions.
Board, any questions for EPA? Mr. Moore?
Uh, yeah, uh, can I make a recommendation for, uh, when you, not just to you, this is a recommendation to everybody on the internet because we've had some noise interference while you were just talking. Is it possible, not just you, but all you guys on the internet, on Zoom or whatever that you folks, uh, folks are on? Can you do a written statement of what you guys are going to talk about? If you guys aren't going to be here physically, email it to our, uh, to our board president. He can make copies for us when we come to the meeting. So at least we kind of have a semblance of what's going on, especially if we're going, yeah.
Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
I covered that. The next meeting will be in person. There will be no online communications. You guys don't agree with that decision, then you guys can discuss it in the next meeting. When the next meeting will be in person, no online communication.
Thank you.
Any other questions for EPA? Audience, any questions for EPA? Hearing none, thank you. Moving on to the military of the Army.
Evening, Chair Holmes, Vice Chair Gower, Board Members. It's great to be back. Sorry I missed the last one. I've got some updates for you though. So first, uh, we have an update on the, um, contaminated water sign that was identified and, um, the removal of that sign. So, uh, our Department of Public Works is aware of the sign and, um, but they're unable to locate the exact location as soon as they're able to. Um, and I'll get with you, uh, Chair Holmes, right after this to get the exact location. They will remove the sign. But bottom line is the sign was put in place because of the rainwater and drain runoff in the area from AMR. And it is, uh, non-potable water, but it is not contaminated. That's from our, um, uh, water, uh, quality expert that's on the staff. Um, couple of
Before you continue, can, can I address that, Mr. Gower? Take over the floor, please. I want to bring up that, uh, I did a thorough investigation of this Army sign. It's not necessarily the sign. We want to know why the sign was put up there next to the Salt Lake Waterway. And my, I went all the way around the whole waterway and not only the area where the apartments are located, the condos located, it has a terrible stench, but even on this side of the waterway, the stench is very strong. Did you know from 1950 to 1970 that the Army was dumping sewage into the Salt Lake Waterway?
I was not aware.
They had pipes that went into the Salt Lake Waterway and I found that through my investigation. And I want to know if the pipes are still there and they're still running sewage into the waterway. That's very important, but that's terrible what's happening, that the sewage is going, um, going downhill into Salt Lake from the crater. And it's, uh, ending into the waterway. Then we have problems with the stench all the way around on the waterway. So I want to know if that pipes are still in force and is still being used by the military to put sewage into the waterway. And during those 20 years that I found those dates from 1950 to 1970, we had a Hawaiian bird sanctuary there that the Hawaiian water birds were mingling there. We also had, uh, we started a fish pond with mullet there back in the 60s. And all this contamination was coming from up the hill down into the crater of Salt Lake, from the Leamano Military Crater. I need the Army to research this and come back with an explanation why this was set up that way. And how are they going to help the Honolulu Country Club and the state remedy this situation with the people that live around this waterway that has to deal with the smell? At first, we just came up about, I was on the board for a while, but about 10 years ago, this thing came up as far as the stench on only the apartment side, the condo side, uh, towards Alanaconani Street, Country Club Plaza and that area. But then I, after further investigation, I went on my own and went through three regions, went to the back, I looked in the Salt Lake District Park. All the way to the back and went to the water source. And it's, it's a stench that's, uh, even worse on this side. And the stench is obviously in the country club, you can smell that from the Latini Street, the mini park and on the opposite side, uh, areas of the waterway. So the waterway was being maintained by the Honolulu Country Club. They have new owners that took over a year. In good faith, they've been trying to clean up this area by themselves. We tried to get rid of that stench. If the military has these pipes running down and they had it in the past, even though they stopped the sewage flow into the waterway, they're pretty much responsible for this waterway. And they still own some of the waterway in Salt Lake. I don't know if you know that as well, but I see you do look up that because the federal government owns some of that waterway. Also, the federal, the reason I, I push for this and I know a lot of the old time board members, we pushed for Salt Lake District Park to connect Honolulu Maui Park under the master plan, which was done in the 70s. That never did happen. And I also, through my research recently, I found out why, because the federal government owns the property in between there. That's why we cannot connect the, uh, the parks together. But you guys still, and that's where your pipes are coming down into the waterway on the ground. So I, I need you to do some research and get back to this board because this is a really serious issue that affects the people of Salt Lake. And we need to get a handle on this. You guys need to reach out to Honolulu Country Club, see what you guys can do to help the community. And if that was happening, you guys are involved in this as well. And if I don't get any response from the Army and the state and everything else, we're going to start hearing, getting public hearings on all of this. And you guys are going to have to answer to the community because that's going to be our last resort. We have no other avenue to take besides holding public meetings and, and bringing the media and notifying everybody about what's going on with this waterway. Before, I just thought that, you know, the Salt Lake, the community, uh, on the other side of the condos was just, oh, they had a smell going on. Now, I've researched, I did my homework, I went around in person and, and went around the lake and I smelled it. Stench is bad. And we need to find out, not necessarily what's in the water, but how to clean this up. You guys need to work with the country club because they don't know what's going on. They just bought this property about a year ago. But if you guys know what's going on from the military and this thing is coming down into the, the waterway. And like I said, I, my research only covered 1950 to 1970, this was going on. I don't know if it's still going on. That's another question I, I want you to find out and talk to people who have knowledge of this. Get back to us. And I also have something with the state because there's a report that was done concerning that. And I need the state of Hawaii to come out and this, and they refused to turn over on their governor, John Burns back in 1964, 65, I believe. He ordered an investigation regarding this particular incident. And the report from the state of Hawaii was never disclosed to the public. And I want, I want that, I want that report disclosed to the public. But we need to get on this. It's been going on too long. People have been dealing with this stench, but this waterway needs to be cleaned and, and make the corrections so people in the community can live day to day and not have to deal with this stench. Any other comments from the board, for the Army? Audience, have any questions for the Army regarding this issue? And you can continue, oh, you can come up if you, the microphone, if you have something. Awesome. Thank you.
We'll go with our, we'll go back to our Department of Public Works. Those are the experts that will be able to, they'll have the information on that and you'll check into the, if those pipes still exist and if so, what, um, what we can do.
Totally. That was the only reason that sign was put up there. Pollution signs. And I sent that to people. So you guys have a copy of the signs. You guys kind of locate the location or do a walkthrough with your folks and I can point it out to you.
Yeah, I'll get with you right after this.
This is an immediate concern for our community. It's been going on for years. And we need to, you guys need to work together with all the parties involved, Army, state and the country club and get this resolved for the community. You can continue with your reports.
Okay, so, um, additionally, I have a couple of other, uh, items. So we have a job fair on the 19th of September at AMR Physical Fitness Center from 8:30 to 1400. There will be interviews and tentative job offers, uh, given on the spot. Additionally, in October, there will be another job fair held at Millilani High School from 8:30 to 1400. November, there will be another, we have a job fair nearly every month. November, we will have another one, date and time to be determined. December, there will not be one through the holidays.
October, what date was that?
The 11th. I have handouts for the, uh, for this month's job fair. On the table back here, additionally, brought some, um, weapon safety items. So, uh, weapons locks for anyone that would like to have these or take them to handout, um, just, uh, for the community and weapon safety in general. So, um, we have those as well. And I am available to answer any questions that the board might have.
Board, any questions for the Army? Audience, any question for the Army? Hearing none, thank you for your service. Thank you for coming up. Okay, moving on to our agenda. Any other military agencies here? Okay, school updates. We did the Radford High School update. Anybody else from the schools here? See any? Okay, let's move to the approval. Excuse me. Let's move to the board action reports, uh, resolution regarding the Salt Lake Waterway. Secretary Tony Morrow, I'll give you the floor so you can introduce your resolution.
Thank you, Chair. All right, this resolution is advocating for the proper maintenance of the Salt Lake Waterway. I did, um, issue a email with this attachment to all of the board members. Uh, but may I read it for the audience? Okay, so whereas under the Okay, so whereas, under the State of Hawaii Land Use Agency, a parcel identified as an Activity Fifty-four Outdoor Recreation Classification located at sixteen ninety Ala Poo Malu Street, Honolulu, Hawaii nine six eight one eight, is listed as a P dash one Restricted Preservation District and zoned as an Urban Conservation District Parcel. Whereas, the parcel classification and stipulation of the state land use as a conservation district and restricted preservation district is to protect the flora and fauna on the restricted preservation parcel and maintain the natural habitat of the endangered Hawaiian duck, the coot, the bat, the turtle, and the short-eared owl. Whereas, longtime residents and citizen stakeholders of the surrounding Salt Lake, Aliamanu, Moanalua area have honored, respected, and malama the aina to faithfully ensure the sustaining of this conservation land. Therefore, in the past twenty-five plus years, have actively taken a civic responsibility to rally together to impress upon each new landowner of this parcel who has acquired this preservation conservation parcel to preserve the natural beauty of the land, protect the wildlife, and to keep the waterway flowing with life of the land, the waaii, all life-giving water. Whereas, the Country Club Village Phase Two Association has repeatedly appealed to the Neighborhood Board Eighteen for assistance to have the appropriate city and state agencies address and investigate the obvious neglect of the waterway. Under the leadership of former city council member Joey Manahan's office, the then-chief of staff Radiant Cordero was most instrumental in her office's initiatives to better regulate the maintenance management of the waterway property by passing a revised amendment, which is Bill Forty-three in twenty seventeen. The CD One to the city ordinance directly relating to the maintenance of channels, stream beds, stream banks, and drainage ways. This new city ordinance requires all owners of this preservation conservation land parcels with waterways to be held accountable for the proper and timely maintenance of the land property and stream so that the natural flow of water runs unimpaired. The landowners shall also be responsible for the removal of any debris, vegetation, silt, or other items or materials of any kind which may interfere with the natural flow of water or is likely to create an unsanitary condition or otherwise become a public nuisance. Neglect and such violation of neglect to be subject to violation fines imposed by the City Department of Facility Management, DFM. As recent as twenty twenty-one, the city DFM drainage engineers were finally mobilized to weekly monitor the maintenance of the waterway and with quarterly walkthroughs and meetings with the Country Club Village Management and Board of Directors to discuss the many health-related concerns that were brought to the attention of the Country Club Village Board. Also involving select departments of the University of Hawaii to sample test the waters for any organic pollution or possible toxic contamination and identification of the source of stagnant waters riddled with green algae to be safe for those many residents reported suffering from various degrees of severe allergic symptoms and the horrific foul stench of the stagnant blackened water from the decayed remnants of the poorly unkept maintenance of the waterway. Whereas, the Country Club Village condominium Phases One and Two that are located right along the waterway has advocated continuously through the past ten years to our Neighborhood Board Eighteen for some resolve to address the Honolulu Country Club Management to adhere to the city ordinances of their obligation to properly care for and maintain the sustainability of this conservation land that Honolulu Country Club Golf Course occupies. Whereas, the embankments of the waterway along the Country Club Village condo's side have been meticulously trimmed back and maintained to uphold the Country Club Village's mutual neighborly right of access to the Honolulu Country Club Property Agreement with ACC to keep the towering invasive ekoah or haulee koa trees and the massive wild weed-like grass reasonably maintained for the purpose of preservation of the soil embankments from erosion and to control the imploding rodent problem on the opposite Country Club Village side of the waterway. Whereas, the Honolulu Country Club, a private membership golf course, outdoor recreation full facility, was newly acquired in August of twenty twenty-two and is now under new management of J.J. Koo Hawaii LLC for the past eleven and a half months. Be it resolved that the Honolulu Country Club, along with federal, state, and city agencies, agree to improve the conditions of the waterway and abide to the conditions of the state land use laws and city waterway ordinance and work cohesively in partnership in maintaining the Salt Lake waterway on behalf of the Salt Lake community, especially the residents who live along the waterway. Be it further resolved on this fourteenth day of September twenty twenty-three that the Neighborhood Board Eighteen, Aliamanu Salt Lake Foster Village Airport, stand united in support with the constituents of the Country Club Village Phases One and Two and all neighboring residential Salt Lake community stakeholders to adopt the Salt Lake waterway and proactively promote for the preservation of this natural conservation habitat land, wildlife, and waterway to its natural flowing form. Cleanup efforts of the waterway to be completed by Saturday, October twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three, which will be a joint community-based celebration of the National Make a Difference Day. Thank you, Chair.
Board, any discussion regarding a resolution? Or the vice chair, Connie Morrow, they take the floor, I have a few items to add on.
Yes, Chair. Go ahead.
Just want to point out a few things regarding this waterway that a lot of people don't know about. Years ago, before this Salt Lake was built, this waterway was over one acre in length, thirteen feet deep. And if you go a little back, way back, back then, uh, it was sugar plantation land. And the problem with the lake was that from the sugar plantation and the crops, a lot of the mud was, was going into the lake and salt was coming from, um, the ocean area coming into the lake, which this pond was full of salt. So, a tesian well was drilled by the plantation, put fresh water into this lake. Anyway, speeding up forward in the sixties, there's a decision made by politicians and the government that, uh, I believe hundred seventy acres was going to be used to, uh, form Salt Lake housing. That's why you see today of all these apartments and stuff. They were going to keep thirty-five acres for the, uh, waterway around, uh, golf course, the planned golf course at the time, which to this day is Honolulu Country Club. In nineteen sixty-six, when this was occurring and this was going to be dug up and Salt Lake was going to be built, the state of Hawaii did no study at all regarding the talks of the cleanup and the preservation of this lake. Politicians at the time said that in nineteen sixty-four that this lake would be preserved with the mullet in the water and the Hawaiian birds, waterbirds in the area. This was going to be a bird sanctuary and it would be preserved by the state of Hawaii. It was very, uh, my research, it was very intense between the politicians and the state and, and, uh, developers. But anyway, the developers won over, um, they started to build this and, um, the sanctuary, whatever it be, um, that idea passed and they started building Salt Lake. But moving forward, um, Honolulu Country Club was, um, built in nineteen seventy-seven. Over the years, I know the Country Club Plaza and other people was trying to get the Country Club to take care of a problem that we had, um, of the waterway. But the new owners of the country club have made an effort to help clean up this waterway. It's the only entity within this whole project that actually is amazing, doing something to help the problem. We have a lot of issues in this thing, not only, I just addressed the military, the sewage coming down from the Leamona crater into the lake's waterway. I have the state dredging, drilling, all these different places and, and backing up the sewage area. And just look at Makuna Puna, high tide, overflow, blocking the road. It's kind of impassable, you can't drive on circuit streets on Mahua Street, Makuna Puna Street. City and state, because of the water stream, has not, has not dealt with this issue, has not solved this issue. And this been going on, I worked in that area for twenty-five, thirty years before, and it was going on at that time. And all this dredging that they're doing is still not helping the problem. And I fear, yeah, this overflow, we're gonna get a big, really bad rainstorm and it's gonna flood the waterway of Salt Lake. And the drains are being clogged, they're pulling up shopping carts, they're pulling up rubbish all in this sewage area, I mean, this drainage area. And it's gonna block the drainage where everything goes downhill. I just, a couple of weeks ago, I was in Las Vegas and, uh, Spring Mountain Road, uh, Sahara Avenue, Flamingo. From Red, uh, from the top of, uh, the Red Mountain, the top, the water was just rushing all the way for a couple of miles, all the way down until, um, they reached the leveling point of, um, the casinos and stuff. But it flooded the whole parking lot. And I feel this is gonna happen to Salt Lake one day if we don't start getting onto the government and saying, you know, you guys gotta fix this problem. And, and a lot of this flooding, just look at Makuna Puna, it's so bad now. And, um, flooding is everywhere in Makuna Puna and mostly like the two streets I mentioned. But the state, they gotta take care of that along with the city. And I, I believe because of the dredging, this caused some of the problems for the waterway. And the army needs to work with the Honolulu Country Club to clean this thing up. And it has to be a community effort. And I agree with the, I agree with the resolution, uh, brought up by Board Member Connie Morrow. And I'll be supporting that resolution. Board members, any other?
Is there a call for a vote? Is there anyone going to call for, for adoption? Hey, Chair?
Okay, getting back to the chair, um, move on to, uh, recommend the adoption of this resolution. Anybody will be, uh, since Board Member Connie Morrow introduced the resolution, she can move with the resolution, we need somebody to second.
Okay. Oh, she didn't make the mic.
Thank you very much, Chair. Yes, I'll make it very short and sweet. Um, I'd like to move that we adopt this resolution advocating for the proper maintenance of the Salt Lake waterway, which will also involve federal, state, and city partners to work together in resolving this problem that we have.
We, we need a second?
I second.
We got a second? It's already second, now we're gonna get a vote, Mr. Moore. Hey, um, Mr. Barrett, yes or no? Mr. Gallow? Mrs. Godfrey?
Yeah.
Ms. Hine?
Yes.
Don't lie. Mrs. Connie Morrow? Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Lady Gallow?
I don't, yes.
And myself, I'm voting in favor, yes. Um, Christina Yonchong is not present. If we carry the resolution, we have a majority of. We didn't hear anything from Nicole Hine.
Please, sir?
I did.
She did?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Okay, we're good. So the resolution, uh, introduced by, uh, Board Member Connie Morrow is passed. Moving on in our, our agenda, moving on to another resolution regarding speeding, red light, motion cameras introduced by Mr. Moore, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, okay, this is to, from Neighborhood Board Number Eighteen. I passed, I made the sheet out anyway. By the way, I have some ex, well, sorry, I'm just gonna read it to save time. Resolution to the City and County of Honolulu regarding traffic safety measures. Okay, regarding traffic safety measures on Salt Lake Boulevard, date September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, to Mayor of City and County of Honolulu, Honolulu City Council, Department of Transportation Services, and the Honolulu Police Department. Subject: Installation of Speed and Motion Cameras on Intersections Bordering with Salt Lake Boulevard at Arizona Road and Ala Lilicoi. Whereas, Neighborhood Board Number Eighteen represents the residents of our community and we are deeply committed to ensuring the safety and well-being of our residents, pedestrians, and motorists. And whereas Salt Lake Boulevard is a vital thoroughfare within our community, but it has been experiencing a significant increase in speeding and reckless driving incidents, posing a severe threat to the safety of both pedestrians and other road users. And whereas the intersections at Arizona Road and Salt Lake Boulevard had witnessed numerous incidences of vehicles running red lights and engaging in reckless driving behavior, thereby endangering pedestrians, cyclists, and other motorists. And whereas the enforcement of traffic laws in these areas is essential to reducing accidents, injuries, and fatalities resulting from such reckless behavior. And whereas speed and motion cameras have been proven effective in deterring red light running and reckless driving, while also providing a valuable tool for law enforcement to identify and apprehend those who disregard traffic laws. Now, therefore be it resolved that Neighborhood Board Number Eighteen respectfully requests the City and County of Honolulu, the Department of Transportation Services, and the Honolulu Police Department to collaborate on the installation of speed and motion cameras at the intersection bordering with Salt Lake Boulevard at Arizona Road and Ala Lilicoi. And be it further resolved that these cameras be employed to monitor and enforce traffic regulations, specifically focusing on capturing vehicles running red lights and engaging in reckless driving behavior. And be it further resolved that the revenue generated from fines incurred through the operation of these cameras be reinvested into improving traffic safety measures and infrastructure within our community. And be it further resolved that Neighborhood Board Number Eighteen requests regular updates and communication regarding the process, the progress, and effectiveness of these measures to ensure the continued safety and well-being of our residents and all road users. We urge the City and County of Honolulu to consider this resolution as a sincere plea for the implementation of safety measures that will protect the lives and property of our community members. Respectfully, Neighborhood Board Number Eighteen.
With the resolution read, um, I take it, Mr. Moore, you're basic asking the. basically asking the city to look at, uh, using cameras and, uh, whatever tools they have to slow down the traffic in that particular area, is that correct? He wasn't listening. Anyway, the board members, do you guys have any discussion regarding this resolution? Mr. Barrett?
I would like to see that, um, this resolution add the entire length of Salt Lake Boulevard, so everybody in this area knows that we're looking into their safety and well-being on the whole distance of Salt Lake Boulevard, just not here in Salt Lake. So add Buganville and add Ko'o'a Pa'ani.
Uh, in response, I orig- I, I made this originally about two months ago, I think, two meetings ago, and I passed the original one out. And I talked to some people in the city, and they told me that it's too much, and the cost would not be affordable to the city at that time. However, if we can get started with at least one, then that may open their eyes, that we may continually put in more. And that's why I cut it down from, I think it was eight lights down to one, you know, two at this time because of costs and so forth. And to, as, as an experiment as well, to make sure that it works, and then it will justify our, our, uh, request for furthering motion cameras along the rest of Salt Lake Boulevard, because there are a bunch of other areas that are just as bad or worse.
Yeah, board members, any other discussion regarding this matter? Hearing none, please, Chair Gower.
Chair, um, so basically this speed motion camera is similar to the ones that's already being installed on, uh, the red light, the red light cameras in certain. Thank you, Chair.
I also would want to add to this, that the city could look into, we always, throughout the years, we're having problems, Salt Lake Boulevard heading in the ever direction towards Aloha Stadium, approaching Arizona Road and Ala Lilicoi Street. You can get a downhill, and there's a traffic light. All these years, there's people complaining that people are running the red light. I believe you could see it for, we're in a quarter mile, but people are going so fast, by the time they start going downhill, it's too late, they committed themselves. This would be an ideal place just before that red light, I mean, a little bit away from, have rumble strips, so they start slowing down. That would be a first for this board to address, and then we can look at the rest of Salt Lake Boulevard. But that concern has been with us for a long time, and we need the city to look at this. And, uh, I know, um, I think Mr. Barrett brought it up at one meeting, that they wanted to check the red lights to how to, people couldn't see it, or they wanted to see if they could adjust the, the red lights, uh, when it comes on. But I think with rumble strips just before the, the light system, I think cars would slow down, and they would have time to sufficiently stop for the red light. Hearing none, seeing that, anyone have comments?
Uh, yes, in response.
Second round, Mr. Moore.
Oh, sorry, second round. I, uh, checked with neighbors about the rumble strip, and it's very similar. If you folks drown, drive down Nimitz by Zippies, you know, by the Honolulu Harbor area, it makes a lot of noise as cars go by, and I talked to neighbors on that, because there are a lot of residents that live in the apartments. There are probably about ten, fifteen thousand people on that, you know, on the Malka side of the road. And that strip would be really, really loud at night as well, and it'll disturb a lot of people. And so that's why I didn't add rumble strips as well on this time around as well.
Well, that's for the city to look into, if that's a feasible option or not. Okay, uh, Mr. Moore, is your resolution, give me a short and sweet, uh, response, so we can get this.
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, have this resolution up for, uh, motion to vote upon and to pass, so that we can, it's, it's, so we can pass this on to the city.
Mr. Moore, I need the wording of your resolution, so we can second.
Oh.
Your motion.
I moved that, I, okay, I moved that. Do I make the move?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not all into government, into financial planning. But anyway, uh, okay, I moved that installation of speed and motion cameras at intersections bordering with Salt Lake Boulevard at Arizona Road and Ala Lilicoi.
We are second on this motion. Mr. Barrett has a second, let's take a vote. Mr. Barrett? Mr. Gower? Board member Godfrey?
Yes.
Board member Hine?
Yes.
Board member Connie Morrow? Board member Omora?
Yes.
Board member Igawa? And board member Yonjza, yes. Miss, uh, Christina Yonchong is not present at this meeting, so I think we have a eight zero zero. This resolution has passed and will be presented to the city. Moving on on our agenda.
Chair? Yes, Mr.? I don't know if I'm, I'm probably breaking protocol, but is it possible to add into community update Salt Lake widening project for future minutes?
Yes. Put that, put that in email to me, and then we can put it up for our next meeting.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Okay, um, I, I, on our next, uh, issue was a permitted interaction group, uh, the pig in Salt Lake. Uh, the reason I put this on, I think we have to do some follow-up, uh, that we never did do. Uh, uh, we did have a pig before, and Mr. Barrett, I think was the chair of that pig, regarding the intersection at, um, Ala Lilicoi Street, at Ala Yilima Street, where there was a pedestrian, uh, accident there by the shopping center. And I also wanted to look at the intersection at Ala Napunani Street and Ala Yilima by the fire station and the high school. Um, I want to get this started, if we can, uh, have any of these board, uh, any board members willing to help out? Mr. Barrett, I'll put him in charge again. Um, anybody else can, I'm looking for, uh, one more person. Hey, Mr. Moore, the two of you, you guys will be in charge of the pig for those two intersections. And, um, probably give you, uh, maybe two months, maybe in November's meeting, you guys can come back with some suggestions, and we can address that at that time. And, Mr. Moore, you cannot sit in McDonald's, you got to be with Mr. Barrett at the intersection.
Yeah. Uh, also, there, there was, I guess, maybe I, I missed that. Um, there's, it's been brought up at prior meetings by, uh, people that have come to our meetings. I think this is like four, five months ago, and also three months ago or so, twice, where on, uh, Ala Lil- on, not Ala, on Lekini Street, right here, right by the elementary school, there's the hill going up, and that, uh, residents have come to this meeting directly and have complained about, uh, drag racing that seems to be going on a consistent basis. And they've asked for us, us to check into that as well.
Yeah, Mr. Moore, I, I addressed that with the city, and they said they were going to look at that. We had for, we advocated, um, for, um, some traffic measures in that area on Lekini Street, one on the apartment side, one in the, uh, housing area towards, um, Ale'amaano. So the city hasn't got back, hasn't gotten back to us. Was that? No, but, but under the city presentation, she, the one that did Ala Napunani and Ala Awalani Street, her division takes care of that, and she said she'll look into the two Lekini Street locations and the Ala Yilima location, so we're all set with that, we just need a response back from the city, so. Mr. Moore, you need to pay attention to these meetings. Anyway, um, moving on, um, meeting venue, location, and meeting time. I, Mr. Barrett?
That, we asked, back when the Salt Lake widening started, we had a lady from the city and county that was, that came to every meeting we had, and then all of a sudden, she stopped. Um, can we find out who that was and get her to come back to our meetings again? Because it'd be a lot, nice to have the updates on Salt Lake Boulevard widening project and what's going on. I have like about eight questions, but there's never anybody here for that, so I want to make sure we get that.
I'll, I'll put it in the next meeting, no problem. Hey, uh, moving on, uh, again, meeting venue, location, meeting time, uh, just for your board's information. I secured the Wauwu Veterans Center, um, I jumped the gun and notified you guys that will be our next meeting venue, but the city, uh, Neighborhood Commission Office, so powers to be, got this location at, um, Salt Lake District Park. My concerns with all of that, uh, I, I believe they're taking away a lot of stuff from the chairs and the board, because in my time, when I was a chair before this, we all were allowed two hundred fifty dollars for, to put this on TV, to pay for a vendor to run these meetings, and it was two hundred fifty per meeting. Or we could not have any type of, um, TV thing, and they would allow and send out to every person in the, in our district, uh, two times out of the year in a newsletter. So we chose year after year to do this, go this route. We also, at that time, had two hundred dollars to, to get a monthly, uh, venue that wouldn't go over two hundred dollars. This is what was offered to us at that time. But now everything's changed, I guess the city wants to keep the funds low, and they're looking at locations that the city owns to get this going. I mean, I'm fine with this place, but at least, uh, maybe if you can get back to the people at the Neighborhood Board, did this city, I know they got fans in the gym, at least put some fans on, it's awfully hot in there, especially when we're going to close the door with the noises in the parking lot. And my other concern was that we gotta, we gotta be out of here by nine o'clock. Um, technically, the meeting should, can be run for three hours, I, I'm never going to run a three-hour meeting. Um, so I think we should be out of here by nine o'clock. That's when the gate closes, and everybody's supposed to be out of the parking lot. So hopefully we can adhere to that law, so, um, we can move this meeting along, um, every month and get out of here on time. So our next meeting will be here at six-thirty, and I'll take it from there. Any other, uh, questions or things you want to bring up regarding the venue? Hearing none, let's move on. We need to approve some of these minutes, uh, I put on August tenth, but the Neighborhood, uh, Commission added on March, April, and July, uh, along with the August tenth meetings. Has any of the board looked at these meetings? I have, you guys have any changes or additions that want to be made to this, uh, minutes? Hearing none, we submit it as postponed. Everything? Okay, um, let's move on, the next, uh, Ale'amau Soli Foster Village, uh, Neighborhood Board will be held on October twelve, six-thirty, at the Salt Lake District Park. Before we close, um, uh, I, I gave some community, uh, team assignments, and I just want to go with briefly what I expect in this for each board member. Um, not that you're going to make the report every month, but maybe two or three months, you might have something come up in your, uh, every area of responsibility that you need to address. And if something comes up to me as chair, I, I will let you know what I need to be done regarding, uh, that particular issue. With that said, as chair, I'll be in charge of public safety, any issues with public safety, and I, since I'm the chair, I got a lot of, uh, stuff to alter month during the meetings to take care of. That would be my area of responsibility. I assign, uh, board member Barrett to transportation and construction, uh, within our area. If he can stay on top of transportation and construction. Uh, uh, Christina Yonchong, I assigned her to the homeless and Aloha Stadium. I'd be helping her with the homeless issue, because it's a lot to, to grasp, and a lot of, uh, things that we need to think about. But, uh, she also will be on, uh, in charge of Aloha Stadium. Um, health services, environment, I gave that to board member Connie Morrow. I think she's a fit for that particular assignment, since she's working on the waterway as part of the environment, and she's always been our health services, uh, a team member for that. Okay, Mr. Moore, I got you on the legislation, and rail skyline and the buses, you told me that you ride the rail and you ride the bus. So this would be a good fit for you, Mr. Moore, and you always up to date. You watch the TV and see yourself on TV, and you know all the legislative stuff on TV. So you'll be responsible for that, Mr. Moore. And then, uh, uh, Nicole Hine, I got you with Parks and Recreation and the military. Uh, if I have anything regarding those, uh, the Parks and Rec and the military, uh, send it to you, if you find anything you want to bring up at the board meetings, you can bring that up under your area of responsibility. Vice Chair Gower, I have you with the Ma'au, uh, Wauwu Metro Planning Organization and the neighborhood system itself. I think it's a good fit for you, because, um, you're the vice chair, and, and you kind of, uh, pretty much need to know the Neighborhood Board system. If you see any things that we should know about as a board, they report it to us and, uh, make contact with the Wauwu Metro Planning Organization and see how we can help. And, um, uh, board member Igawa, I got you with senior citizens and, uh, children, the Kiki. Uh, any events regarding seniors, the Kiki, um, can let us know at our meetings. Um, board member Godfrey, you in charge of the education of the schools, and you're responsible, and we're greeting the chairman of the board. Like I said, I don't, I don't expect a report every month from you folks, but, um, as you go along these meetings, maybe two, three months, you guys might have something, you can bring it up, I ask for, uh, committee or, um, team reports, when you guys can report. Any questions regarding these assignments, Mr. Moore?
Yeah, uh, if possible, this is like for all of us, and it's going to be a challenge for myself as well, folks probably hate me for this, but for the committees and stuff, if you have something major, you say, can you write it down before, like on a sheet of paper and stuff, and have it like passed out to the rest of the board? So we have something to guideline off of, not just during the meeting, but afterwards as well, too. Because usually it's a continuation, so we don't forget. Like guys like me, it goes in one year and out the other, and then as soon as I leave, I forget.
I will address you via email if I have any assignments for any of you. Any other questions, board?
Over here? Oh, I thought. So, so if we, okay, I went to sleep, oh no. So, um, if we have things to share with the board to make a report, should we send it to you in advance?
That would be nice.
Because it's already on the agenda, you're going to keep this section.
But if you, if you send it to me, and then I can look it over, if I have any questions, I'll get back to you before the board.
And so how, like a week ahead, or?
Whatever.
I mean, because you have.
Twenty-four hours ahead is fine.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, just.
Moving to Connie Morrow.
Thank you very much. Um, I just wanted to just emphasize that, um, with our previous NA, we never received a list of all of our board members' contact information, so that I could email things and send it to the entire board. Um, so as far as communication, uh, I, I do believe tonight we filled out cards. Shall I assemble the list and email it out to everybody, or will you take care of that?
I'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Secretary Connie Morrow, I've got most of it. I need to contact, uh, get in contact with Nicole Hine and get her information, and then I can send it out to you folks. Uh, just a reminder, the, this meeting is videotaped, um, on air on Olelo, Channel forty-nine, on the fourth Saturday of the month, and at nine PM, second and fourth Friday of the month, at seven AM. Uh, before I adjourn the meeting, board members have anything else to add before we adjourn? Audience have anything to add for this board? This meeting is adjourned.